Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 1st, 2023 regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Planning Board. I'm Stu Hardy, Chair of the Planning Board. And as always, I'd like to start our meeting with a roll call of our members to establish a quorum. So I'll start with Adam Raposa. Adam, are you here? Peter Bramonte could not be with us tonight. A work conflict came up. Janice Gomes.
President.
Christopher Shriver.
Here.
Patricia Hilton. Rosemary Eva.
Present.
I think that's everybody. So we have a quorum of six members, and we only need five. So I'd also like to introduce our interim Tiverton Town Planner, N.A. Ashley Sweet, sitting on my left. And to my immediate left is Todd Romano, our legal counsel. And Ed Rotella is our land use clerk down at the end of the table on the left. I don't see Rick yet, but I'm expecting Rick Rogers, our DPW Director, to join us. But we have Nathan Michael, our consulting engineer from Weston and Sampson. Nathan, welcome. So now, I would like to start our meeting with the first agenda item, which is both an Article 20 Development Plan Review and a major land development project, which is a small solar ground array. And I believe I see Julia and Michael Shelter and Kate Notta. And while they're coming up, I'd just like to say that this is a very small ground array. It's only 22,660 square foot, which is, if my math is correct, about one-half acre. It's at 590 Fish Road, near the intersection with Eagleville, and on land owned by Life Raft and Survival Company. And as you may recall, back in June, June 22nd, there was a Technical Review Committee meeting, and we all have notes for that. And then our last meeting on July 11th, we did two things. First of all, we combined the major land development master plan stage of consideration with the preliminary plan stage. So instead of having two stages and two separate votes, they're combined into one. So only one vote. And then, we made that. We agreed that the time clock would run concurrently for both the major land development and the Development Plan Review, to make the process go forward more smoothly. So just having given that little bit of background information, I'd like to call on, I guess I see, Michael. He's ready to give us a little bit of an update as to what has happened since July 11th. So, Michael, go right ahead.
Hi, yeah. Michael Shelter from EGOG Energy. I'm here tonight with Julia Magliosa and Kate Notta to go over our proposed solar system at 590 Fish Road. So since our meeting on July 11th, we've made just a couple other updates to our site plans based on feedback we've received. These will be included in our final plan. We added in just lines showing where the wetlands are, where the wetland buffer is, and the distance of the array from both the wetland and the property line. We have also added some contour lines to the, basically the blank map we were asked to show with no imagery in the background. So we'll also have that sent over to everybody for the final plan. And then we did finalize our total count of trees that we will be removing. There is the one that is on the eastern side, and then there are four additional that are actually just on the southern border. So there are no trees on the western side of the array that are being removed. We understand that was a concern with the view shed, but we're happy to inform you that the installation of the solar system will not impact that view shed because we're not removing any of the trees there.
To add to the, so these five trees that we're showing here on these latest plans, those are all being removed because they would be causing shading on the solar array. Of those five trees, three are actually in a, what would be called a deteriorating condition. So the arborist has recommended they be removed regardless of the solar being installed. So two are really coming down for the shading. Three are already deteriorating. The arborist onsite did also identify three other trees that are deteriorating, that are not required to be removed because of shading, but they did recommend that we remove those as part of our scope of work as a favor to the property owner because those trees are becoming dangerous. They potentially could fall. They're in a deteriorated state. So let me actually pull up the plan to show you all of those.
Yeah, we had just received this plan, so it will be sent over for the final plan as well.
Yes, so I think we can see these. They're a little bit harder to see, but any tree with an X on it is slated to be removed. And as I mentioned, there's eight trees total.
This one, this one, this one, this one, this one.
And then two in the upper right. That's correct.
She said there's three additional trees that they identified?
Yes.
Not for shading, but for safety?
But for safety, exactly. So it's eight total. Five for shading, and then three additional because they're deteriorated.
Okay.
And then Ed Rotella had sent us over a concern from an abutter, Mr. Coate, at 127 Eagleview Road. And we would just like to respond back just with some updates regarding the cleaning of the arrays that in our operation and maintenance plan will have instructions on routine cleaning. And it really will be something as simple as spraying them down with water. There's no chemicals that will be used. There will be nothing that will infiltrate the well system or any of the other water systems or ground. You know, nothing, no chemicals used. And then also, as we just went over the tree removal plan, we hope that this satisfies the concern about tree removal, since it's really only, you know, the one main tree that we were already planning to remove for shading. And then the other tree that is being removed is because of it being in a deteriorating state, as Julia had just mentioned.
So would this be the east side?
That is the south side.
That's the south side?
Yeah.
So you're looking, so Fish Road is to the left, that is the east side.
Okay. So is Mr.?
Sorry, west side. Yes, I misspoke.
Is Kevin Coate in the audience?
I am.
Mr. Coate, would you like to come up?
My apologies.
I should know that, right? He's been around for a long time.
Yeah, my home is located on the right side of that picture, just beyond the edge of the border there. Based on what I've seen here, I don't have any issues with the thing. You read my only issues that I possibly had. I have solar panels on my own home, so I'm fine with it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Michael.
No problem. Yeah, so thank you again, Mr. Coate. We were glad to hear from you and that we were able to answer your concerns and address them. So next, moving on, related to our RITM approval, we did reach back out to SLR, who we had perform our stormwater management and other plans that have been provided. And they did a review of comments we received from RITM, as well as the review of all of our plans that exist, and have determined that since it's less than one acre that is being disturbed, and also the size, sorry, the, let me start over, my apologies. Given that the disturbance area is less than one acre, and that it is so far removed from this emerging wetland, they do not believe that we would have to go for any permits. So we are requesting that the board will take this in lieu of seeking that formal approval from RITM, given that that is a much lengthier process, and also, we do have this professional input stating that the project is not anticipated to require the coverage.
Thank you.
And then we just have one more item. So for our surety request, we had done some research online and found through Rhode Island Division of Public Utilities and Carriers that in their past couple of dockets over the last couple of years for their REG program, that there's been a decommissioning cost determined to be $28.58 per kilowatt DC, based on the industry standards. So we use those to apply them to our project, and it totals to just over $7,000. And my understanding of the code is that we're able to provide that in cash form, depending on where the board would want us to remit that payment to.
Okay.
I think that's everything?
And then, just following up from the Technical Review Committee meeting, we're still working with the Fire Marshal. Our director of asset management has been working with the Fire Marshal on our decommissioning plan, emergency action plan, signage, other, couple other items that came up in their discussion. And those are out for approval from the Fire Marshal now, so we'll, of course, provide those in the final plan as well, once we receive all of those back.
Thank you.
That is all right now on our end.
So since we already heard from Mr. Coate, I'd like to actually invite any member of the public who would like to, who has a question or a comment to come forward. Tell us your name. Speak slowly, so that Ed Rotella can understand, and your address, if you have any comments.
Hi, Wendy Turricott, 595 Fish Road. My biggest concern is the construction stage, and how much it's going to affect the neighbors. Blasting, drilling, the trucks coming in and out, how long, what the timeframe is. Because we've got a lot of construction already going on the road. So I don't know if you can give me some idea.
Sure, absolutely. Happy to speak to that. So certainly, if Tiverton has any restrictions on construction hours or days of the week, we would certainly be working within those. I don't know them off the top of my head. I'm sure they are written down somewhere, so we would adhere to them. But in terms of construction noise, there would be probably within a week span, the majority of deliveries would arrive on site. So there would be about a week where there would be truck noise with the delivery of the racking system and the modules. But then in terms of the actual construction noise, there should not be any very significant drilling noise. Most of these systems are mounted on piles that could either be screwed into the ground or tapped in. For a system of this size, that should not take very long to complete, and they should not be very noisy. Once the racking is in, the noise is fairly minimal. There'll be mounting the modules and adding wiring, but there should not be significant noise.
How long does the whole setup take?
The whole construction for a project of this size, I would say, start to finish would be at most three months. But that would not be the time that the noise would be the loudest. I would say the noise would be three weeks, maybe, between deliveries and that racking install.
And at that point, like you said, there will only be maintenance, or is there going to be other things that happen with the system?
Once it's installed? No, it will only be maintenance. So we will send someone once or perhaps twice a year if more cleaning is needed. That cleaning would be with water, so it'd be the noise of a hose, and then just someone walking the site to do regular maintenance. No major construction at that point.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Wendy.
May I?
Yes.
Julia, the water will be coming from probably a tank or something bringing onto the site, since there will be no water required for this particular?
For cleaning, that's correct.
Cleaning, right.
Yes.
The other thing is that we seem to overlook again is the Class 1 survey that we need and for the abutters on it and the zone, as we, reporting purposes.
So we do have, yes, we have here the Class 1 survey. We did realize, as we were putting together this presentation, that this does not have the stamp on the bottom. We do have that version, unfortunately, did not make it into this deck, but we will have that in the final plan review. But this is a Class 1 survey, unfortunately.
This is our 20. It's in the packet. It's a site plan. It just says existing conditions.
Yes, but the content here, maybe I can zoom in to show?
I think we looked at this last time, and you showed us on the screen that it was a Class 1 survey.
Yes, it says here a Class 1, but unfortunately, this was the not-signed version, so I apologize for that oversight. We will provide the signed version.
Okay, thank you. And while members of the public are thinking about asking a question or making a comment, I'll call upon any member of the Planning Board. Then I'm going to call on Ashley, but any member of the Planning Board have any questions for our team? Yes, Patricia?
I do. I think this is a great project, and I'd like to see it get approved. But I'm going to respectfully suggest that it might be good for you to spend a small amount of time just going through the ordinance a little bit more, because there are some things that are still missing. So there is a landscape plan that's required. I understand that you've included the information from the arborist about the trees that need to come down. We asked about that. But the ordinance actually requires you to submit a landscape plan. So for example, I don't know what you're planting underneath the solar array. I have no idea. I don't know what you're planting around the solar array. And you also have a responsibility to the abutters on the east side, because they are, you know, a non-conforming use, an inconsistent use, that they're entitled to, although the Planning Board can offer some relief, you know, a 200-foot vegetated setback, a buffered setback. But that doesn't include their property, meaning you have to provide that. And I honestly don't know what those trees are. I don't know if they're evergreen. I don't know if they're deciduous. I don't know if in the wintertime, when leaves fall down, then, so this is all has to be part of a landscape plan, because in part of approving this, we need to be sure that those residential properties don't have their, you know, their wintertime view does not become the solar array. So you guys really need to work on that. The other thing is, as far as the surety goes, I'm not sure. Julia, did you prepare the surety?
I did.
Okay. So the ordinance requires that this estimate be prepared by a licensed engineer. That's what the ordinance states. And it has to include a mechanism to adjust for, you know, cost increases over the lifespan of the project. The idea is that in 20 or 30 years, and we hope that this will still be a viable thing, but none of us know what's going to happen with alternative energy. I mean, for all I know, in 30 years, we'll have, you know, Apple Watches that, you know, can generate enough electricity to run our houses, right? I mean, we don't know, right? So what the town doesn't want to have is a bunch of sort of, you know, white elephant, you know, falling apart solar arrays, because they're now obsolete. So there needs to be enough guarantee that those can be removed by the owner, or if the owner isn't able or is unwilling, that ultimately, if it becomes a nuisance, that the town has the funds to remove it. And, you know, as of right now, recycling those panels is not inexpensive. So we really need to have, you know, an estimate prepared by an engineer, and it's got to include at least a minimum, as stated by the ordinance, of a 2.5% increase, you know, yearly, to account for inflation over time. So we really need to see those things in order to be able to approve it. I do think, I don't think that the cash thing will be an issue. We specifically wrote the ordinance to give applicants an opportunity to provide that assurance in a variety of ways, but it does need to be prepared by an engineer. Our engineer needs to review it. And the last question I have is whether or not, has Nathan had a chance to review the stormwater management plan that's been submitted?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hear from you on that a little bit.
Yeah, I think I provided those comments. You provided the updated version, and nothing, we flipped the road, and nothing changed. So the stormwater plan, okay.
So Nathan, could you just kind of summarize? I know you've got it in writing, and it's in our packet, but could you, just for the benefit of the audience, sort of summarize your?
Stormwater management?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so I went through the minimum standards, the first one being LED. And the general theme of a stormwater management plan was?
That's low-impact development.
Low-impact development. And the general theme of the stormwater plan in general was low-impact. They have stone-level spreaders. They assumed that the actual arrays were impervious, which is a conservative way to do it, and it has no impact on the neighboring wetlands. So the LED and the ground, a lot of recharge, water quality, both of those standards have been met. And then the other one would be the flood protection. All their calculations demonstrated that they meet those standards. Pollution prevention, that had been met. The only one note I have for the board was that they mentioned that the no-existing illicit discharges, and then there's a form in their operation and maintenance plan that the applicant could sign to say there's no illicit. So that was unsigned, so the board could always have them submit a signed copy of the illicit discharge form in the O&M plan. And then they provided an O&M plan, that's another minimum standard. And then the only other comment regarding the storm management plan was that they still had a sentence in there that there was no clearing. And I think the other comment was that it doesn't really matter for storm management plan, but it says it's a six-foot fence, and it needs to be an eight-foot fence. So those two comments are still in the plan. If you could just finalize that, correct that, now that you have your tree removal plan on the setup.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Nathan.
May I address Patricia's comments?
Yes.
So a few things. I'll start with the landscaping plan and the vegetative buffer first. So we do have a landscaping plan. I believe this was only finalized after we had the tree removal, so I don't believe that this was in the last packet you received, but it is now available. So we do have this landscaping plan to add some plantings in the northeast corner of the lot, above the solar array. That really is the only viable area of the lot in which we can add plantings. Of course, to the south, we are removing trees to prevent shading, so it would not make sense for us to plant south of the array. So that northeast corner is really the best place to add trees to sort of compensate for some of those that are being removed. Regarding the abutters to the west side, I recognize that those are non-conforming uses. My one concern there is, to the immediate west of the array, there are no non-conforming uses, right? Those non-conforming uses come out, I believe, sort of northwest of the array.
If I said west, I meant the ones on the east side there. You can see them. There's one, two, three, right?
You're referring to this home?
Those three houses.
That is the west side of the property.
Oh, is this?
Yeah.
Never mind.
So I think we're speaking about the same thing.
Yeah, we're talking about the same house.
So on the west, so due west of the array, between the array and the property line, we only have 124 feet. So we cannot have a 200-foot vegetative buffer to that side. To my understanding, that is not a requirement in an industrial zone, but that is being requested because of these non-conforming uses.
It is a requirement where you abut a non-conforming use, such as a listed. It's a requirement. The Planning Board does have the authority. If we have a landscape plan, and a landscape architect says it's not 200, you know, it's not 200 feet, however, it will provide adequate screening to accept that. We can.
Okay.
But we need to know for sure that, you know, those residential uses, when the trees come down, when the leaves come down in the fall, you know, that their view shed is now not the solar array. So it is a requirement that we have that plan, and that the Planning Board feels comfortable that it will accomplish the purpose.
Right. So with this plan that I'm showing, I know you have not had an opportunity to review this, I guess I'm wondering what would make you comfortable with this? Would it be adding, our arborists adding a statement that they believe the view sheds will not be of the array? Because when we ask them to put together a landscaping plan in line with the ordinance, this is what they recommended, or arborists recommended this. I'm curious what would be beneficial to add potentially to this plan that would make the board comfortable.
I have just a question.
Of course.
What's the elevation difference between the solar array and that, you know, that was, yeah, so, I don't know, picking a line?
Yeah, I can pull that up. So we are looking at, up here, so really the nearest abutter being this one to the south is, that's at 250, they're higher. The array is down 240, 230, so it does slope downward.
Yeah. Can you pull the line up, please? That might help.
And the panels are 12 feet, approximately 12 feet or something?
No, the panels are seven and a half feet. I have that. Here, they're seven feet.
Three inches?
Okay. And then we do have, oops. This is from the south, we find that line of sight from?
That's the last page.
Thank you. Yes, that is correct. So this is from that southernmost abutter. So you can see that existing building, that tree line, and then the line of sight downward towards the array. My understanding with how these are drawn is that some of those may be evergreens. We can ask the arborist to identify those, if that would be of assistance, but we had no concerns with the line of sight. Once the arborist and landscape architect had walked the site, they expressed no concerns, even with this line of sight view.
So for me, what I would like to see is a little drawing that identifies the tree material that's there and what they are, the tree material that you're adding, and that they meet the spec, because there is a spec in there for trees. In other words, you can't plant, you know, one-foot sapling, right? The planted material has to be of a certain height, and identify exactly what is where. Because the part of this is that you are responsible for that landscape buffer for the lifespan of this. So if those materials die or need to be replaced, we need to have a plan that says, this is the plant material that's part of this buffer, and this is where these materials are, so that we know in the future, if any of them die, or, you know, that they'll be replaced with, you know, appropriate plant material. So I would like to see actually, you know, at least for that side, a drawing of what's there, what's being planted, what the plants are, and, you know, I would, yes, I would feel comfortable with a statement from a Rhode Island Registered Landscape Architect saying that this is sufficient to protect the view shed all year round, but the abutting waters.
So just to make sure that we are on the same page, we are not offering any plantings in the landscaping plan on that western side. There is no room to add planting to that side. So we are reliant on the buffer that already exists on site. It is a fairly heavily wooded area, but we are not planting to that side of the array because of shading concerns. We cannot add any plantings to that side of the array.
So what are the plantings that you just, the plant material that you just showed us pictures of, where is that planting going?
That is going in the northeast corner, so that is this area. Up here, that is really the only viable area of the property to plant replacement trees.
So I just want to, I share the concerns, and I think there's more than, you know, a little more that can be done here to ensure that those residential uses don't have a direct view. But I do want to point out that the property line for that last most southern residential use only barely coincides with, like, if you draw a parallel line from the array, a majority of the array is to the south of those residential uses. And that property that abuts it is not non-conforming.
Right.
That is an industrial property.
Yeah, so I know the array is not shown on the survey, but the array is in this area that is marked as grass, and what Ashley's speaking to is that this area directly due west is?
Is industrial and is used as an industrial property and not as a non-conforming.
An abutter up here, right.
So with that in mind, and with, you know, Patricia's concerns in mind, I don't know if there, can you bring back the aerial view?
This one?
Yeah, I mean, I would just, you know, talk to your landscape person, your arborist, see if there is anything additional that can be done in that area. I mean, it is challenging, because there's a bit, I mean, there's a building there as well, but that is not directly abutting the array.
Right, yeah.
Majority of the array is abutting that industrial property. So maybe it's just an issue of, like, that little corner where it bumps out?
It may be, and part of the reason I'd like to see a landscape plan is, I don't know if those are evergreens or deciduous trees. So I don't know if in December, you know, that? So I don't know if in December, you know, that view corridor from those three houses opens wide up, in which case we might ask you to replace some of the deciduous trees with, you know, evergreens. But that's why having a, an actual landscape plan would be really helpful.
So if I'm understanding correctly, I think the ask is, given that this line of sight that I'm showing here, this is the non-conforming use that is closest to the area of the solar array, and the concern is that the trees that are shown in this plan will not always look full the way they do in this line of sight, right? The ask there is, what, what do these look like in January?
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
In the Class 1 survey, going back to this, it will show the array on it, correct?
I do not believe it can to be a Class 1 survey.
That's what we have to record in the land evidence books.
So I believe, oh, can you go back to your Class 1 survey? So the, the final plan that gets recorded is gonna need to have, you're gonna need to do it one of two ways. One is that you have this existing conditions plan with the Class 1 survey, and then the site plan that shows it, but I think more importantly would be to put those together. So essentially, you'd show the array on this plan.
My understanding, and this may not be correct, so do correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is with a signed Class 1 survey, that can only show existing conditions. We cannot show a proposed structure and have it certified as a Class 1 survey.
You could use a note.
That's my understanding, but if, if we can have it signed as a Class 1 survey with the existing structure, we will do that. But my understanding is that's not allowed per the standards of a Class 1 survey.
You can put a note on the plan.
It may, right, if we box it in as proposed, and then they could sign off on it?
We see, we see potential building locations all the time on Class 1 surveys, showing us the property lines. But they're labeled as proposed, so you could put the array on there as a proposed, you know, ground mount installation. More importantly, you know, the Class 1 survey is speaking to the property lines.
Absolutely, yeah.
We can, we can work with you, depending on what your surveyor says, but.
I'm sorry about that. On PB 100, and then that planting, so if you look at the setbacks there, and another reason that it would be nice to have this on this Class 1 survey, those setbacks don't match the setbacks on the planting sheet. So if you could just, when you finalize it, correct those inconsistencies.
Sure.
Just so that way we got an idea of exactly where this array is gonna go, not a range.
I'm just thinking, 20 years down the road, when we look to see where it is, we know where it is in the land evidence.
Absolutely.
I'm not giving you a hard time.
During a site walk, you notice that there's a large pile of debris, kind of like earth. Is that something the property owner is going to remove for, for you prior to construction? Because someone mentioned noise and timeline, just so they were aware of, like, you know, trucks and whatnot. Because right where Array 1 and 2 is, when me and Ms. Ava did a site walk, there was a large, large pile of earth there.
Okay. Kate, are you aware of that with the property owner? If not, I would imagine that we would probably be responsible for removing it, but I'm not sure if we have that agreement in place with them.
I'll have to confirm.
Yeah, okay, we will have to confirm, but either way, we will identify how that will be removed and what will happen to it.
Thank you, Nathan.
And when you do the landscape plan, would you also include the information about what you're planting under the array? So we know, I mean, I'm assuming you're planting something under the array, we just...
Oh, you mean seeding underneath?
Yeah, what you're, what you're seeding with? I mean, there are options, so we'd just like to know what you're...
Any, any other questions or comments on the part of the board or from the audience? I think to call on Ashley to suggest next steps. And Ashley prepared a memo, which we all should have.
So I, I gave you a, a draft decision. It's really up to you at this point. We have a time clock on the preliminary that runs to October 20th. So you can do one of two things. You can continue the application and have the applicant return with this information, and then consider final to be done administratively. Or you can, we can work on that list of conditions based on everything that was just discussed, if you're comfortable conditioning, you know, it, it is a bit of a longer list of conditions, but that's at the comfort level of the board, whether or not you want to condition the master preliminary and DPR on those items, or whether you'd like to see those before you issue
So, so, so if you understand what Ashley was just saying, we could, we could ask the applicant to come back for the September meeting before the time clock runs out with the items that have been discussed as, as items that we would like to see. And then, in September, make a decision on the, on the major land development preliminary plan and on the DPR, the development plan review. We could do that in September, or we could do it tonight, but do it as conditionally, citing all of those items that have been identified, both by Ashley and by Tricia Hilton and Rosemary, make those conditions.
Want to list the conditions again, there was the, the survey?
Oh, I'm gonna ask Ashley to, to just read through those conditions.
So...
Our list just got longer, but...
It did, and I've been taking notes, but I've been taking continual notes. So you have some outstanding issues with the fire marshal that need to get resolved. We'll need a letter from the fire marshal confirming that he's all set with everything. Let's see, we need an updated landscape plan that confirms that the, the adjacent residential uses are properly buffered year-round, identifying what's being planted, what the planting height is, distinguishing between evergreen and deciduous trees on that western property line.
I think it says it on there, actually, it says they're deciduous plantings.
Well, I think we're talking about the existing. So Tricia was concerned that some of that existing buffering, if that's, if there's not evergreens in there, then over the winter months, that becomes a less effective buffer. We need an updated surety that's stamped and signed by an engineer and accounts for the cost increases over time at two and a half percent. Need to update the stormwater plan for removing the eight, the six-foot fence, reflecting an eight-foot fence, and identifying that there is minimal tree removal on the site. The landscape plan needs to accurately reflect the distances from the property line of the solar installation in conformance with the site plan. You're gonna provide us information in terms of who is going to remove the pile of dirt, rock on the site.
And when?
That might be it, let me just go back.
That's a, that's a condition, that they have to do, I mean, it's not, that's not gonna get done. I mean, it's right where their array is going.
I'm just repeating what, what I heard everyone, whether you want to make these, you know, conditions or not, I'm just repeating what I've heard. I think that's, I think that's it.
I can't think of...
I have a question for Ashley and the supervisor. On the surety, once that's submitted, then it's reviewed by our engineering firm, right, to determine whether or not the proposed engineering costs for removal are accurate. After that, if there's a discrepancy, it's the planning board that has the opportunity to increase the required surety. So these would be the process, and whether or not we, what kind of decision we make tonight, do we abrogate that potential responsibility?
So you could, one of your conditions is that they provide the surety by a registered engineer that accounts for two and a half percent increases yearly, and you could add to that to say that is approved by the town engineer, should there be a discrepancy, you know, the applicant, you can, they can return for final and deal with that issue if necessary?
I'm, I'm, sorry, Ashley, have I cut you off?
No, no, I think that's...
I, I've just been thinking, I like this project very much, I fully support it. I, I think you're actually making an improvement to the site. But this is the first solar project that has come before us since we adopted our new solar ordinance, and I think it's really important that we walk through each step very carefully, because this kind of sets, sets the role model of how other projects will, will be handled. And I'd like to say that, that the team, the ECOG team has been terrific to work with and extremely accommodating. And at the risk of, of causing a bit of a delay, I, I'm gonna suggest that we not, we not make a vote to approve with conditions tonight, but that we ask ECOG to come back for our September meeting, and we'll put you on the agenda early, first thing, if we can possibly do that. And by then, you will have, we will have seen the material, and I think we can then approve a preliminary plan and, and a DPR that's much cleaner than what we would do tonight. And, and then, once we do that, you don't have to come back anymore, because Ashley will then go through, go through all of the loose ends and, and administratively grant the final. So I'm gonna suggest that as a course of action, if everybody thinks that that's a prudent way to go, because there, there are some complexities here that I'd kind of feel a little more comfortable seeing on paper, particularly the landscaping plan, but also the fire marshal. You know, so if that's agreeable to everybody, and I, I'm saying not at heads, let's do it that way. And Ashley, do you happen to know when our September meeting is? It's like September 6, isn't it?
We have to move it as of the election.
No, that's a note, that's a, oh, it's September. So it would be September 12. Okay, we're gonna dumber that later on tonight, right? Just get a motion if you're gonna do that.
I'll make a motion that we continue this agenda item to the September 12 meeting.
And the hearing.
And the hearing.
I would second that, student.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue to September 12, 2023. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and I just have one quick administrative question, since we've already submitted the full application, we just have to provide Ashley with the updated materials, correct? Okay, thank you.
Do you need copies?
Yes.
Copies for the board?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, copies for the board.
Yep.
Good.
Great, thank you so much.
See you in September.
Yes.
Enjoy the rest of the summer. So the next, the second item on our agenda is a major land development, which is a comprehensive permit project, and this is a concept plan review. We, we haven't heard anything of this, so I would invite the, the applicant's team to come forward. We, I, I would like to say that while they're getting organized, that we have had several emails come in, I think only three, unless I missed something that came in sometime this afternoon. We have an email from Susan Anderson on behalf of the Tiverton Historic Preservation Advisory Board regarding the Osborne Bennett National Register Historic District, and that's dated July 29, 2023. We have, we have a second email from Susan Anderson in her, acting in her private citizen capacity regarding water service and the impact on wildlife and the need for more protected open space in the north end. And we have an email from Christopher Pinkley, Pinkney, 15 Bulgarmarsh Road, simply opposing the development. I think he indicated he would not be able to be with us tonight. I don't think anything else, did anything else come in, Ms.?
For, in regards to what?
In regards to agenda item number two, what is being called, the Souzer Road Development.
We got Sue Anderson?
Yes, I, I went through that already.
Pinkney?
Yes, yep, went through those, okay, thank you, Ed. So, so having said that, I would invite Mr. Mancini.
I'm back.
You're, you're back, I said, I, I recognize, I remember you from the Brighton Solar Array.
That's right. Correct, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, and who, and who was your colleague?
So I...
Who are, who are your colleagues?
I have brought a, a team of, of experts, and if I can, if I can start, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, John Mancini on behalf of the property owners and the applicant, in respect to an application which has been submitted for a comprehensive permit, I'm, I'm sure the board is very, very much aware of the process pursuant to Rowland General Law's 4553, one, and specifically 4553 four, which is the procedure by which the state statute lays out a process and procedure for approvals. We are at the pre-application stage of the review of the comp, of the conceptual plan, which we call really pregame or pre, pre, pregame. And what I've, what we, what we have done to date is provide a conceptual plan, filled out the application that the town has provided to us, and we have followed that checklist. And I have with me Len from Dupree Engineering. Dupree Engineering is the engineering firm that will be helping us design this process as we go through the reviews. As the chairperson indicated, the approval process is a major land development process, so we, there are several processes that need to be completed, starting with the master plan, preliminary plan, and final. Each stage, as the board is aware, has very specific requirements, and we will meet those requirements as we go through the process, among other items as the board requests. I also have with me Jason from Cordison Design, they are the project architects, and, and to this project, they are very, very important, because this is a unique project, not only for the town of Tiverton, but really for the state. It's, it's one of the first and only projects of its kind, which is single-family detached rental, excuse me, rental units. What the applicant is proposing is to construct about 225 units. Of the 225 units, 25% will be low to moderate income or affordable housing. We have submitted our application to Rowland Housing, what's called our letter of eligibility, which will present to the bars, to the board as part of our application. And the point of tonight, of purpose of tonight, per the statute, is to give the board a review of our concept plan. And we've provided the board a short description, as described in the statute, of what our project is. And what we want to do this evening is solicit information from the, from the board, and if the board wishes also from the public, to get an opportunity to view the designs as we've presented, and also to talk about some of the... some of the specifics with regards to water and other utilities, access, and then to elaborate on them as we go through the process. Following the pre-application hearing, we will also submit for our master plan, following master plan, as the board's aware, we would submit our, our engineering. The concept itself, which is one of the first things I want to touch upon, as I indicated, is, is unique. As most have seen, a lot of the comprehensive permits are either apartment buildings, or they're multiplexes, either duplexes, triplexes, or fourthplexes, but they're all attached, and they're attached for specific reasons, which is, it makes things easier to construct when you're constructing in groups. What this application does is, is a different type of housing stock. It is a housing stock that is targeted towards workforce housing, which is also affordable housing, but it's single-family housing. So each of these units are detached, they are built like single-family homes, they are, all the attributes is a single-family home. The only difference is, is they are constructed in a systematic way, in, in sense that they're a community development, and they are used for rentals. So these are not homes that will be for sale, these are homes which will be rented. And the focus of the development is to target, you know, young professionals, those that are starting out in their careers, if you will, or starting out in the process of finding homes. And right now, as I'm sure many of the board members are aware, there is a, a housing shortage, and there's a housing shortage in that particular target area, which is single-family homes. Finding new, developed, constructed, single-family homes at a reasonable price right now is, is challenging, and this development seeks to fill that gap. Twenty-five percent of the homes, as I indicated, will be affordable, they will be staggered throughout the development in accordance with the statute, which requires them to be done in a systematic manner, which cannot be deviated from, but also one which cannot be obvious. And, and these homes from the, from the outside will pretty much not be distinguishable from those which are affordable and those that, which are not. But really, the goal of the applicant overall is to provide affordable, affordable housing. Additionally, the, the, these homes will be also serviced by amenities, and those amenities will be a clubhouse, there will also be other amenities that you would find in a, in a rental complex, and they will be all within this compound, if you will. We've also developed a system of roads, have developed adequate parking to, to meet the requirements for, for parking, and we've also looked at traffic and also have looked at utilities, all of which we'll, we'll discuss this evening. One of the other elements, as, as you know, the, the project is located in a, in two, two areas, one is Lot 110, I'm sorry, Lot 102, the other is Lot 220. There are different zonings, the, one is a highway commercial zone, the other is a residential zone. Neither of the two zones permit by right the development of single-family houses, so one of the first requests that we will seek of the board is a variance, deviating from your table of uses to permit this particular use, which is, again, single-family detached. Secondly, we will be seeking dimensional variance. Because of the design of the project, it's very difficult to comport with your rear side, or your rear setback, your front setback, and your side setbacks, so we will be seeking deviation from those requirements as well. Under the statute, as you're aware, this board is kind of the superboard, in the sense that it has the power to deviate from the zoning code and to provide the release, the relief that we're seeking in a unified manner, in one-stop shop, if you will, and that's, that's essentially what we're looking to do. In return, the applicant provides a bonus and provides housing in, in, a need for specific housing within the community in the area. One of the other elements that we've looked at, and we will further discuss with the board, is the comprehensive plan. We have hired a land use expert planner, consultant, who will present a report with respect to consistency with the comp plan, and also consistency with the town's overall development and land use maps. We will also present, and, and again, not tonight, but this is part of our overall plan, I don't want you to think we're going to be here till two or three in the morning. We also will have a fiscal impact study prepared, we have an expert that has been engaged to look at the fiscal impact of this project overall, and what the positives and negatives of such a project with this type of unit count would have on the, on the, on the property. And as I indicated, we also have engaged a traffic expert to provide traffic analysis. Much of this will be presented in more detail at master plan, and then the engineering concept of this will be presented fully at preliminary plan. So, so with that, Mr. Chairman, that, that is essentially kind of my overview of what we're doing, why we're doing it, and, and why we're here, and for the purpose which we are here. If, if you have any questions, I'd like to take them now, and then I want to present Mr. Bradley from DePreet Engineering to kind of walk through the site, and then present Jason from Cordison Design to go through the individual layout of the, of the units, if you will, the architectural style of the units, the composition of the overall compound and the amenities, and to why this is kind of a different housing stock, certainly different to Tiverton and, and nothing like it in the state.
I'd like to just, for the sake of the audience, remind everybody that this is, what, 67, roughly 67 acres, and it's on the south side of Souza Road, going in the east from Viti all the way to Main Road on the west, with two spurs coming out on Main Road, or at least one spur coming out, I believe, on Main Road. And it also abuts Route 24. So it's that block of land that was proposed for a mixed-use development some years ago by the Carpiano Alto Organization, and, so I just wanted to remind everybody of what parcels of land, I believe there are two owners, McGinnis and Brito. So having said that, would you, would you like to hear all three, I'm asking the board, would you like to hear all three presentations, and hopefully brief, because we're going to have you speak again in much more detail, this is just a concept review, so let's keep this brief, but would you like to hear all three presentations first, or would you like to have questions and then, anyone?
What I would suggest also.
They can prevent first, present first, please. That'd be great.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, yeah, what we'll do is, we, we really want to be brief, we want to hear more from you, so you can look at what we have, but we'll.
Yeah, and I'm going to, I'm going to open this up, I'm going to ask our town experts, I see Rick Rogers, our DPW director, to see if he has any comments, and of course, Ashley, do you feel comfortable, or would you prefer that?
I think Ashley's just a note taker tonight.
You're just, okay, that's fine. And, and, but Nathan, I think I'll call on you for comments, and I'll also open it up to the general public. So, so please, so please keep your presentations brief.
Sure.
Because we have quite a large agenda tonight.
Yeah.
So, and so, so sir, state your name very clearly. And you can stand over there, or you can sit at the table, but speak into the mic, whichever you do.
Yeah, for the record, my name is Leonard Bradley, I'm a professional engineer with DePreet Engineering, I've been employed there for over 20 years, I'm a principal there, been practicing land use in Southern New England for over 30 years. I've got my easel here, I'd like to stand at it and speak, if that's okay? I can hold the mic?
Can you present some, can you put something on the screen?
I could, depending on what you have and adapt to that connects. I do not have HDMI port, I guess I have a micro USB C port.
Well, this.
No.
No. All right. So I apologize.
Next time.
Yeah, we have to do this the old-fashioned.
Yeah.
In, in the future, please, please be prepared to, to put things on the screen, and talk to Ed, to understand what you need to bring with you. So if you'd like to.
Does everyone have the plan set? I have reduced copies I can hand out, you need them in front of you?
No, we all have, we all have those.
I'll just pass them over, pass them down as needed. So what I would like to do, and, and I will keep it brief as this is a pre-application, is, you know, talk about what my firm has done to date, obviously this is the very first step, so I'd like to, you know, turn your attention to sheet two of the plan set, which just gives the general location of the site. Mr. Chairman, as you said, the site is between Fish Road and Main Street, just north of Route 24 and south of Souza Road. It's 60-plus acres. The sheet two basically shows a vicinity map of where it is located. For, for reference, it's what's on the board to my right as well. As you can see, the site is predominantly wooded today. Turning your attention to sheet three of the plan set is what we're calling our existing conditions plan. This depicts a topography of the land, it depicts biological wetlands, which we've identified on site, it depicts the approximate property lines, which we've obtained from plans of record and GIS data, it shows the surrounding properties, roadways, et cetera. So the work that we've done to date, you know, from an engineering and due diligence perspective, is we have delineated the wetlands on site, that's denoted with that, that lime green hatch, there's wetlands on the western side of the site, closer to Main Street, there's also several smaller pockets of wetlands along Souza Road, kind of in the center of the site, if you, and there's, there's also a wetland pocket at the northeasterly corner of the site, you know, towards Fish, the Fish Road side of this property, and there's a small isolated wetland adjacent to 24 in the center of the site. We've applied the applicable wetland buffers required by the DEM freshwater wetland regulations, and we're proposing our development outside of the, you know, biological wetlands. The topography on site is rolling, you know, I, I basically would say that the site ranges generally from a, a 210 to 220 contour, there is a, there's a knoll kind of center site that rises up to 260 in elevation, and as you head towards the wetlands on the westerly side of the site, the property drops down, and the elevation of the wetlands are in the 170s, 180 range. But, you know, generally, the site, you know, sits at what I would say is a 210 to 220 elevation. So, you know, it's showing the majority of the site is available for development, and, you know, there's, there's plenty of real estate to do the development that we're proposing. Just on, you know, just kind of going back on a, to recap some of the specifics, specifics of the site, it's 62 acres, there's two lots, we have looked at floodplain as well, there's no mapped floodplains on the site, but there would be flooding associated with the wetlands during rain events. We have not completed a class one boundary yet, that will come in time, and, you know, we've looked at the soils on site, we've also done excessive tests, excessive test holes on site to try to get a glimmer at what the soils are like and the typical of this area, so, you know, at this point, I'm going to turn over to Jason, because I'd like him to speak more to the actual layout and design, as Mr. Mancini said, this is something that's a unique, not unique, but it's new to New England, or to this area of New England, where you have single-family homes for, for rent, zero lot lines, it's, you know, essentially going to be one piece of property in common ownership. So, Jason, I'll turn over, you'll flip the board to my right to show this plan, so you can speak to it.
Len, before you do that, can you just, just tell the board access, where are access points?
Yeah, great question. So, as with, you know, any development of this size, accessing and out of the site are, are, are important, so we propose three access points, one off of Main Street, just north of.
Main Road.
Sorry, Main Road, just off of, just, just north of Route 24, and then we got a main access, which we propose off of Souza Road, kind of center, center mass of our site, and then we have a, I'll say, a third access, also on Souza Road, but more in the easterly end, so we have more than adequate, you know, what we believe is more than adequate access in and out of the site. The other thing I did want to touch on, which is, we've also submitted will serve letters to sewer, sewer department and water department to, to, to get information on the water systems and their ability to service the site, and we've also submitted the site to DEM for freshwater wetland edge verification as well, so those are the pieces that we have in place so far.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Grover, I work with Cordison Design Architecture, I've been an architect for over 25 years.
What is the firm again? I didn't quite catch.
Cordison Design Architecture.
Cordison.
Yeah, and we're based out of the middle town.
Thank you.
I do have additional copies, looks like you, most of you have the copies of the two sheets.
Oh, just the two sheets.
Yes, the last two sheets of the set.
Yeah, I can give you another copy if you'd like.
Yes, if you, if you would, please. Thank you. I just got the two sheets here, that's all, that's all we need for this presentation.
So the, the idea of the development is to try to reduce as much pavement and roads and parking lots and driveways as possible, and to preserve as much green space as possible. So again, the topography, you have kind of two different things happening, on the east side, it's more flat, and then as you go to the west, it becomes a hill. So where you see that big circle for parking with the clubhouse at the top, that's the highest point. And as you go down the road towards Souza, it goes down about 45, 40 feet, and then as you go down the road to the west, to Main Street, that's another 40 feet of elevation change. So that clubhouse becomes a kind of a focal point. Again, the idea is to preserve the topography that exists there and work with it. So on the west side, on that hill, we've created kind of these houses along the hill, and there's a cross-section that depicts that at the bottom right of that sheet, of the elevation change. And on the right side, we're trying to create pocket neighborhoods, so houses that look out on a common green area, and utilize and, and get to enjoy as much green as possible. And there's a whole network of sidewalks that go in between and through all these houses, and lead you to the, to the clubhouse at the top of the hill. The second sheet depicts the different options of single-family houses, there's, there's one bedrooms, there's two bedrooms, there's three bedrooms. This is a blow-up of kind of a part of that pocket neighborhood, where you can see each house has its own front porch, looks onto the common green space that's shared, and then there's a network of sidewalks and pathways that interconnect the whole development. And on the right side, you can see some kind of inspired images of what that space would feel like, and then just a variety of, you know, options for what they'll look like, there'll be one-story gabled roof, New England kind of vernacular design, slab-on-grade homes. So, just to keep it brief.
Jason, can you just, Jason, for the board, can you just talk a little bit about parking and garages and the like, and how we've minimized that and why we've done that?
So you can see there's kind of a loop of a road, and off that loop are, in the center, there's about 12 houses, each that will send, that will share like a, a common space, common park, pocket neighborhood, and then on either end, there's six houses that would share a green space. And then on either end, there's six houses that would share a green space. So we're trying to again limit the amount of roads needed. And off that main road, there are parking spaces so that you would park off of that and walk to your house. So, the furthest you would have to walk is maybe 90 feet to go to a single-family house. Again, the concept of when you rent an apartment building, you park in a parking lot and you walk to your apartment. This has a similar feel, but we're trying to get rid of big parking lots, just trying to park right off the road and have, you know, the shortest walk possible to a single-family. And for them to all be kind of gather around these green common spaces.
I think at this point, I'd like to just run through a couple of items that occurred to me that you might want to think about. First of all, the name of the project. The name of the project appears to be Souza Road Development, although I think I came across Tiverton Crossing at some point or other. That might have been a typo.
Hasn't been determined yet.
We have, right across the street, we have something called Souza Road Condominiums. So Souza Road Development is... I think you can come up with something with a little more marketing appeal than, but you're still thinking about it. Who will actually own the real estate if these are rentals? That's something that we're going to ask you later on. I think we'd also like a pro forma showing how many market rate units you'll need to make a profit, given that 25% are now slated to be LMI units. I think I saw a letter to Rhode Island Housing, but I haven't seen any response from Rhode Island Housing with respect to your letter of eligibility. That's something we're going to be asking for. We're also going to need a clear identification of all waivers or zoning relief needed. As Mr. Mancini correctly said, we're sort of the one-stop shop and we can do, we can grant the relief that you would normally, that a non-comprehensive permit project would normally be required to get from the zoning board. But we do, we would like, as soon as possible, a list of all of the waivers, all of the relief that you're seeking. I think that we're going to be very interested in the exterior design, the architecture of the buildings, as we were with a previous comprehensive permit project in the immediate neighborhood. And also, I think we're going to be very concerned about pedestrian amenities such as sidewalks. I'd also like to call everybody's attention to the fact that you do, despite the Sumeria memo that you will have from Sampson and Weston, Weston and Sampson. This project does impact the Osborne-Bennett National Register Historic District, and you're proposing a road right through that district. That's problematical, in my opinion. Water service. I didn't see any identification of who provides the water. I believe you would be in the North Tiverton Fire District. What we would require with respect to water, it is not simply a letter from North Tiverton saying that they think they have enough water to, or they're sure that they have enough water to supply your project. But we would need a hydraulic model from North Tiverton showing exactly what impact your project would, will have on their pipe and pump infrastructure, whether they can get the water to the high point in your project, and also what impact, and this is very important, what impact the water will have on fire suppression and on hydrants. And we will be getting the fire marshal very much involved in this to go through, to make sure that at the end of the day, we can fight fires in the area. Let me just continue through my list.
It's kind of related to what you're talking about right now, though.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I mean, I don't know how many feet there are between the main roads in this development, but how do you suggest any type of rescue efforts for anybody that's having a medical emergency or fire suppression? And you have no way to get any emergency vehicles between those houses at all?
Yeah, and those green spaces could be made in a way that vehicles could drive over them to get in between them.
All right. I mean, if it's wet, I mean, I don't know that the fire marshal's going to go for that, just driving over wet grass with a eight-ton vehicle.
Yeah, we would design that path so we stay in the truck. We commonly do that.
Right. It's really hard to access, especially if all the parking spaces are full. Okay, go ahead, Stu.
So, just two more items on my list of things that have occurred to me. The bedrooms are very important to us because we have a public school system that is at near capacity at the elementary level. And we don't want to find ourselves, the town paying for a new elementary school. The three-bedroom units are problematical, in my opinion. The previous comprehensive permit project that's right in the immediate neighborhood and is larger, as a matter of fact, than what you're proposing, agreed to restrict it to one- and two-bedroom units only. And we're very specific about how many would be one-bedroom and how many would be two-bedroom. You get three-bedroom units, you're going to have a lot of kids in the public school system. Finally, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues and I'll certainly call upon our experts and open it up to the audience as well. Finally, I think we would probably like a site walk so that the planning board and other people, members of the public who are interested, could do a site walk of the property and get a better feel for it. I know that there are substantial wetlands on the west end of the property. Your problematical road that would go out to Main Road would not only interfere with a National Historic Register district, but would also be crossing a wetland. So, I think that we will be requesting, now that's up to you, whether you want to grant that request or not, but it's, but usually with major projects like this, we like to take a good, hard look at the terrain ourselves. So, and that would probably not occur until the fall, when things get a little cooler for walking. So that's my list. But I'd like to ask Nathan and our consulting engineer, and also Rick Rogers, our Town DPW Director, who is also an engineer, if they have any comments about this. I'll start with Nathan.
Yeah, so obviously, there's a lot more engineering that needs to be done. This is more conceptual. So things I'll be, we'll be looking forward to review, the grading plan, the stormwater plan would be big for this one because they're working in wetlands. All the DEM information, wetland information that's forthcoming, we'll obviously take a look at. Turning plans for fire, trash, buses, things like that are really important, access information. The fire marshal will obviously be involved, as Stu mentioned. And then all the utility information, water sewer, that needs to be provided. We'll review when we receive it.
Rick, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Stu.
Rick Rogers, DPW Director?
Yes. And Nathan will be handling, because it's a planning board process, a lot of what DPW would normally do. My only question at this point is, what, if any, public services will be offered on-site that the town would be expected to handle?
Yeah, we'll want to know that very specifically. Thank you. Thank you. And so I'm going to open it up to any member of the planning board to make comments or ask questions. Remember, this is a concept review, so the applicant is really looking for guidance and direction from us at this point. Rosemary?
I'm concerned about the density. If you were to, a conventional subdivision, how many houses would you get on this parcel?
I believe it's an R... I probably should read that, but I think it's a R40.
Yeah, it's an R40, so...
Right. The memo that we received, I think, had inaccuracy on it and talked about highway commercial. I took a good, hard look at the zoning map, and it's entirely R40.
No, it's not.
No, it's...
No, it's not.
Yeah, it's very tricky. Even in my own office, we debated whether it was highway, commercial, or residential. And I concluded that one lot is in highway commercial. It's weird. It's like literally the definition of spot zoning. It's in the middle of nowhere. And then the rest of it's in an R40 zone. So, that's how we came to that. Tried to match it to your land use map, and it's difficult to tell, but I concluded that one of it's in a highway commercial. But you're the town, so I'm going to leave it to you. If you tell me it's not, I'm okay with that. But we will provide you a conventional plan that will break up and give you an idea of how many residential lots you would get on this site, taking into account the utilities and access in the wetlands.
Just a comparison.
Yeah, yeah. We'll do that.
You said Lot 220 was the highway commercial one, I believe?
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 no. Not 102. 102 is the highway.
We had it on the east. It's to the east.
Yeah, it's in the back. 102 is HC.
Now, see, our zoning map is incorrect.
Not on the online map, John?
Yeah.
So, if you think it is, just can you send to me why you think it is?
Yeah.
And we'll figure it out?
Yeah.
It's incorrect.
But there was a change some years ago when, after New England development was turned down, there was a zoning change from highway commercial to residential, and that was R40. My map, which the town clerk tells me is the definitive town map, shows you to be entirely R40. So that's a mystery we'll have to get to the bottom of.
And I pulled the field cards, too, and 102 still says it's HC. So, but we'll check that. I mean, it's odd. I mean, I even wrote in my papers that it was uncharacteristic that it would be HC when everything around it's R40, so...
It's like a sliver.
Yeah, yeah, so it's...
I think it's a typo.
Yeah, we'll fix that one way.
Because it makes no sense at all.
Send me what you have to think of that, and we'll figure it out somehow. Thank you.
I mean, we, from our perspective, we'd rather see it residential. It's less of a leap. But either way, it should be corrected.
So, Rosemary, did you have anything else?
No.
You can come back in a minute. I'll call on somebody else.
No, my concerns were the density, the water, I mean, with the pressure situation in that area. It always comes, and the sewage, how much sewage do we have? I mean, the town can only use so much sewage with Fall River. So, the infrastructure is...
So, Tricia?
So, I'm a little curious because you're, you know, you're talking about this being a model that's not really been done before. So, what demographics or market research have you done that says that, you know, where the support for this will come from?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, what we've seen nationally and even locally is a lot of investors have been buying up single-family dwellings and turn around and renting single-family dwellings as opposed to multifamilies, especially in rural areas outside of the urban areas such as, you know, down Providence or the vicinity of Providence. And the demographics and really the market study shows that there are those that rather live in a suburban area but simply can't find apartments in a suburban area. And so are gravitating towards the rental of single-family houses. And what many of these investors have done is they've been picking, and they've been competing with others who are buying single-family houses. And so they're buying these multitude of houses spread all over different directions, which makes it difficult to manage and maintain. The concept here is to take that idea of buying multiple single-families in different locations, combining them in one location, and providing that product so that it's available to those who want to live in a suburb, who want to live in a single-family, don't want to live in a multi, in an apartment, garden-style apartment building, or don't want to live in the city and don't need to be forced to be living in the city at a price that makes sense for them. And so, where the target group is, the empty nesters that are downsizing, those that are beginning, and those that are in the middle, which have, you know, maybe have one or two young children. Those really are going to be where you'll see the multitude of interest come from.
So, I can appreciate that, but specifically here, this area, I mean, this is a significant development. And we have already, you know, several apartment complexes. We have, you know, we have approval for townhouse-style development. What is it that, about Tiverton, that makes you think that this is, from a market demographics here, that the need is such that...
It's located, and this is not New U, but it's located in a trifecta area, because you have Fall River, you have Newport, and you have Providence, all of which within 30 to 40 minutes. And you're going to take, this project is going to take from those three areas and essentially pocket it here. But that's where we think our radius is going to be. So when we do, you know, when you put this out for interest, that's where you're going to, that's where you're going to see an interest come from. You're going to see people migrating from those three major hubs into this project.
Why do you want to market to people who don't live in this area?
Well, I mean, I can't, I'm not limiting it to just those people that live in those areas. I mean, this is going to be open to whomever. But I think that that is where you're going to draw people from.
And have you, do you have any market research that you could share with us?
Yeah, we definitely can share, yeah, we can absolutely provide that. I mean, remember, that's not a requirement of the compromise. I mean, the idea is to, is to open doors and not close doors and to provide an opportunity to increase your housing stock. That's the whole thrust behind the comprehensive permit. So our job is not to, our job is to provide that. And if they come from Providence, they come from Providence. They come from Newport, they come from Newport. We're not going to stop people from being interested.
Do you have developments like this that you guys are kind of...
Not in Rhode Island, but we have, we can point to other national developments similar to this. I mean, this is kind of a concept that is being developed in bigger markets, but it's, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel. There's a basis for this.
So, you know, just a little bit of my thoughts. This is, and this is from a zoning perspective, an enormous ask. I mean, I think this might be the biggest ask that I've ever seen in terms of the amount of relief that's being requested. You're asking for use variances, which are the highest standard that there is, dimensional variances, and I think, depending on what you have in here for commercial special-use permits, in our community, even the zoning board couldn't give you a dimensional variance in a special-use permit at the same time. We don't have that, we don't have a Newton Clause in our zoning code that allows that to happen. So, there's a really troubling amount of... So, there's a really troubling amount of relief that's being requested here for just one project. I will say also, too, in terms of, you know, in terms of the location, you know, this is detached, single-family housing, but I'm not exactly sure that it's still essentially a multifamily project. And we do have zones that consider that, this one doesn't. So that there are, and the size of it, you know, is quite substantial. I mean, it will take us time to hear whether or not there's enough water to be able to support this development fully and not dewater the rest of the community. I am a little curious as to the, as to the commercial space, and the only other thing that I will say is that, while I can appreciate sort of, and this is, you know, the idea of the shared green space, when I look at this on a relative basis, the amount of green space, it's really kind of like a stretch. It doesn't, this feels, if I lived here, as though I would be in a really, really dense place, just as dense as practically being is in an apartment building. So, I don't necessarily see, and especially as you get to units over on the west side, you're talking about, you know, being able to share, you know, look out and share green space, it feels more like, it feels more like stripped of law, and not much more than that.
It feels like an extension of housing from a bigger city. Like, people who live in the larger cities are running out of places to live, so you stick something like this in a rural area. You just said that this works in larger markets, and it's not even marketed for our area.
No, that's exactly right. That's exactly what this is, and that's the thrust behind the comp permit. That's going to be an interesting debate.
We can grant and have granted density bonuses, but we do need that supported by yield plan and pro forma and a number of things. And we will not just take your expert's word for it, but we'll be looking to find our own expert to look at that as well. But I do agree, I mean, the first time I saw the plan, the density of it was the most, well, it just jumped off the page. Anybody else on the board? If not, or if you're still thinking about making a comment, I will invite the general public, if any member of the general public would like to make a comment or ask a question.
I do have another question here. Where would the retail be? You mentioned retail.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's retail shown along Souza, in the dark-
The dark brown?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the one up near the clubhouse?
That is the clubhouse.
That is the clubhouse, okay, it's the same color. Okay, so it's just two sections right now that would have retail up near Souza?
Yes, the concept is neighborhood retail, that would, could be daycare, or-
From across the road, as well as within the complex?
Yes.
And we would, and we will need architectural renderings of what you're proposing to build. So I see one member of the public, would you like to come up and speak into the mic slowly?
I have one other question, please.
Yes, well, he's coming up, you can-
So, with the amount of relief you guys are asking for, what's, why not go more of a commercial or retail-based development, why the residential?
They're sitting here, why, why?
You have 40, what, 43 acres of what we found, I mean, if you look it up in the GS, it's highway commercial?
Right.
So why not do more of a commercial-type development, a retail development? Why the residential?
So the reason for the residential and the focus of the residential is that, that is the purpose of the comprehensive permit. So what we're filing under 4523 is a residential development. The commercial is incidental to it, it's kind of take it or leave it.
Why did you decide to go with the residential development? Of all the other options you can have for this piece of property, why did you decide?
I don't know. I mean, we didn't look at this in any other manner for commercial. I know commercial's been tried there before, I don't know the specifics of it, but, you know, based on the prior comment, I mean, we've done our market analysis, which we'll provide to the board, and we think residential is what works here, especially with this type of development. Look, our job here is to give you as much information that you need to make an educated decision based within the confines of the regulations and the statute, which is what we're going to do. We understand this is not a one-night, one-hearing process. This is going to be a long process with a lot of information on all the different topics that you've addressed. And to just touch on quickly, I understand that maybe this is a heavy ask from a relief standpoint, but in review of the statute, in comparison to your comp permit and your regulations, it is not a heavy ask. The dimensional relief of the standard is low, it's a mere inconvenience. The new statute has even lowered the bar, and has even expedited the process for comp permits. And that's why I think the focus is really on the thrust behind the enactment of 4553. But we're going to go through the process and do it in a manner that I think is going to be informative for everybody. And then you ultimately make your determination.
Yes, please speak clearly and slowly, give your name and address.
Hello, I am Nathan Madeiras. My wife and I recently entered an agreement to purchase Lot 221, so we have a very vested interest, which, that's that little horseshoe of land, that little horseshoe of a house in the middle of there. But the council had actually done a good job of addressing a lot of my initial concerns, the schooling. We have a one-month-old son, and now we've kind of got a street in our backyard, which suddenly appeared, which is a concern of ours. Also, I was wondering if there are any assurances that this, although I looked through the plans, and it looks very Pleasantville in the pictures, but are there assurances that this doesn't degenerate into not quite the nice neighborhood that it looks like in the picture here? Do we have a litmus for that kind of thing happening? Also, I am aware, I noticed that on the application, you checked off that it is not a historic district, which I believe a big chunk of that is historic district, Lot 220, I think, and I don't know how that affects anything. That's really, I just came to say my piece, say, you know, I'm a concerned citizen who lives in that little hole.
Did you actually give your address?
Well, I actually live on 214 Hooper currently, but we are in an agreement to purchase 1148 Main Road.
Lot 221.
1148 Main Road.
Yeah, that little hole right there, which, it's got two spurs on both sides, it kind of puts us in a weird place.
Yes, yes.
Which, I would be naive if I thought that nothing was ever going to get built behind us. You know, I'm aware something's going to go back there, but this is just kind of dramatic, you know?
Right, right. And, yes, I'm familiar with the house, I know people who owned it earlier, and it's a beautiful home. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoy it. Thank you. Anybody else from the general public who would like to say something? I think I see Susan Anderson. And Susan, everybody has either an electronic copy or a hard copy of your two emails.
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to read them. I just want you guys to understand that the majority of this, from here all the way across to here, this is the National Register Historic District. So all these houses, all of this thing here, that is in the National Register District. And the state wrote a letter to the town in 2014 on a similar project, and said that any development within that area, those eighteen-and-a-half acres of that lot, is detrimental to the Osborne-Bennett National Register Historic District. Because that acreage is what makes the district the district. The district was significant because of those four houses, one on the west side, one and three on the east side, one of which is the one that he's purchasing. All those four houses are tied in with this eighteen-and-a-half acre of agricultural land that's been in use up until 1941, mid-1900s, for agricultural use. So, the state itself, the Rhode Island Historic Preservation and Heritage Commission, has said that no development should be in there, otherwise it affects the whole district. So, I think you can cut down your density by just putting it in the one lot that you have along Souza Road.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Anybody else from the general public? I think I see Jamie French's hand, but, yes, Mrs. Madeiras? Yes, please. She beat you, Jamie, but you're next.
Sorry, you're next. Yeah, I just have one quick addendum, which is also kind of a question directed at the board as well, to what my husband said. So, I'm aware that there are two other major housing developments that have been approved in a very close vicinity to this one, from what I understand, but Tiverton Heights or Pecassett Reserve, and then the other one that's along Souza Road there. What is the process for evaluating the effect of this development when combined with these two other major housing developments in the same vicinity that haven't been built yet? Like, how can we evaluate whether this area can support all three of those major housing projects?
When we hire peer reviewers to review the expert presentations made by the applicant and his team of experts, we will ask our peer reviewers, reviewers, to, for example, our traffic engineer, or our hydraulic engineer, to take into account all of the projects in the neighborhood that have either been approved or are in the process of being approved. So, we will attempt to take a holistic view and look at the big picture, not just at this particular project in isolation, because as I mentioned earlier, when I was giving my list of concerns, traffic is a concern, particularly on Souza Road. The impact on schools is a concern, because you've got so many developments going in right in that immediate neighborhood. Water service, not only for potable water consumption, but also for fire suppression is a huge concern. And there are probably other concerns. So we will be looking at all of that and doing whatever we can to get an independent, credible opinion on the impact, the impacts that you just mentioned. Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
And Jamie?
Yes.
Jamie French of Craig Avenue?
Yes, I do. Along, it would be nice also, not only for us to speak into the mic, but for that side of the table to speak into the mic when they talk, since it turns into a lot of mumble, and they don't have a mic, obviously.
They have two mics, but they mumble a lot. I agree, Jamie, this is-
That most of what is said can be-
And Rosemary does, too.
She was speaking into her mic tonight. But anyway, I think that this, I think that this project is too much, too fast. It's too dense, and it's just too much. I mean, it's, there's not much you can say about it, other than it's just far denser than what I would expect it to be. It's far denser than the projects even across the street are. There's, like, the wetlands seem to have disappeared in there, and I'm sure that there's a very small border, but it's just, I don't know, it's just too much.
Well, the RIDAM will verify the wetland edge, and so we'll have a good fix on that.
Right, but, you know, I'm-
And if they propose any kind of building, they'll be required to get a permit.
Right, but, you know, the wetlands are just being so abused that, you know, you look, and it's not this developer's fault, but you look across the street, and there's like one row of trees that now is the wetlands, literally. It's not like two trees, it's one single row of, and you go, oh, that's the wetlands, because there's one row of trees on one side of it, and one row of trees on the other side. That's not really a wetland, when you have one tree on either side, and then you have a space, and you have another tree on either side. And that's what's been happening, and that's really sad. I mean, that, our properties, this area has always historically been very wet. And there used to be a gigantic pond right across the street, and the question is, is will the developer across the street hit that pond that was filled in, probably, who knows if it was legal or not, and create more water coming forth? Because as-
We'll be asking, we'll be asking both Nathan, our consulting engineer, we'll certainly be asking Nathan to take the good hard look at that.
Yes, because I don't think people realize how much water there is and was, just like the, like, another question is, will they be hitting the old Tiverton water wells across the street, and that well field, for a water well field lot? Because I've noticed that, I grew up here, and it was very, very, very wet, in Tiverton. And then, prior to 1970, the water was piped underground by developers and by farmers. And as people do things now, they'll be digging in their yard and hit a pipe, and next thing you know, their neighbors downwater to them have flooded basements constantly. And this is an issue, this is one of the reasons why storm drains had to go in, in the roads, like, in the Robert Gray neighborhood years ago, is because all of those wetlands that covered all of that neighborhood had all been filled in, but the water returns. And I just don't think people realize the amount of water that is just alluvial right now, and just almost at the surface. And then when you put something this dense in, there's nowhere actually for the water to go, if there's not enough land there. It seems like there's too much impervious coverage of this lot, and not enough places of pervious for even there to be a little retention basin, a little swells for storm water to percolate down.
Well, we'll certainly be taking a good hard look at that, and as you, you know, as you may know, that's something that I always pay a lot of attention to, the impervious cover.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. So, Sue, just one more, one more comment from the general public, and then we have a pretty large agenda.
I know, I just forgot, I was in my historic mode. No, I'm not. Now in my other mode. So, the north side of Souza, we have 400 units already, housing units, that are going to go in. This, both lots are zoned residential, and the new state ordinance, the new state bills that just are taken into effect-
The 13 that the governor just signed.
Yes, January 1st-
Yes.
Says that there should be two marketable for every one affordable. And I don't think their numbers comply to that, so, just-
That's only with inclusionary zoning, and this is not inclusionary zoning, this is a comprehensive permit. The law does not speak to density for a comprehensive permit.
But I thought, aren't they, they're having affordable housing, isn't that part of this?
It's two different things, two different mechanisms to create affordable housing, but under a comprehensive permit, there is no set density standard.
Okay, so-
It's only for inclusionary zoning. Inclusionary zoning is an option that municipalities can implement, the theory behind inclusionary zoning- The theory behind inclusionary zoning is that it keeps you from backsliding, so that with every major development you get, you get a portion as residential to keep your 10% from moving backwards.
Yeah, but we're never gonna, we're never gonna reach 10%.
Well, that's a different, entirely different discussion.
Right, so you're saying, so we don't, so this, we don't have to, they don't have to build two for one?
This is, there's no set density bonus with a comprehensive permit. It's a negotiated discussion between the planning board and the applicant.
Okay.
And the applicant has to prove that they can build at the density that they're proposing in terms of water, sewer, traffic, you know, environmental considerations.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll take one more, a comment from the general public, and then, yes, you. And then I'll ask the board if anybody else has any comments.
Hi, Cheryl Tedesco from 136 Beardsworth Road in Tiverton, and just basically, my basic concern is if we have enough water for that, because I know sometimes we have droughts, even now with the amount of people we have, and we're very restricted on water. So, that would be a concern, and like you said, the schools, because, and our fire department, because we're losing fire department people all the time, if we have enough to cover, since we already have houses going on the other side of Souza Road, if there's enough to, you know, service the other side.
Yes, absolutely.
And I thank you all for looking into that.
Yes, we're on top of that, but then, but thank you. And please, please monitor our discussions, and feel free to participate.
If I may ask, Ms. Tedesco, are you serviced by North Tiverton water?
Yes, I am.
How is your water pressure?
Not good. So, that's what I'm saying, this could, we have very high time even within our home because of the water pressure, and if you have so many more people using it, I don't know what Garden Heights is going to do, because we already have that problem now, getting water pressure up to those houses. And if you're drawing...
Garden Heights has a great problem.
Yes, but is this going to, you know, put pressure on that, too, because now we're, you know, servicing other lots?
We're going to press North Tiverton Fire District to actually show us hard engineering numbers.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, I'm going to ask if any other member of the planning board has any comment or question for the applicant, and I think Krista.
Just, if you were to take, just a thought process, if you were to take the historic district out of it, and not built in that area or requested variance, is that economically feasible for you to do this? Like, is there a plan that you can come back with that gives you what you would want, but take the district out of it?
You know, that's a good question. The answer to that, I don't know, but we'll, you know, we're, we're going to take that back and confirm what part of it is in the historic district. We're going to confirm that, and we're going to, you know, run our numbers on density, and we're going to do all that. I mean, you know, the point, the purpose here is to get all this information, which is, which is very valuable and helpful, and then see how we can best utilize it, and then come back at master plan and address all these issues. I mean, this is not, I certainly don't want you to think that all this is going to go to thin air or deaf ears, not, it's not what we're here. We're going to address it, and we'll have the conventional plan, we'll have the, I mean, look, water is key, and we get it, we're going to do our analysis, and we're going to our table, and hire a hydrologist to confirm it, and then I'm sure the town's going to want to reaffirm it with a peer reviewer, so.
What kind of bridge would you have to build across those wetlands? How significant would that have to be?
You'd really got to look at the topography and the extent of the wetlands.
You'd be drilling pilings and everything else in there, or?
It depends.
Putting piers in?
It depends on the soils. I mean, we're still so early, I mean, I've seen timber bridges done, where we drill, you know, hammer in timber piles and do a timber bridge across, done concrete arches, so this'll, we have a whole arsenal of different type of bridge structures that we could use. So...
And would it be aesthetically pleasing to our, like, out of our town? What we would be looking for, for sure.
We'd make sure it is. The first thing that came to my mind as you were asking that question is the timber bridge, because I've done those before to span, you know, extensive wetland crossings, and it doesn't have a tremendous impact on the wetland, because you're not moving dirt around. You're basically drilling timber piles in and kind of cantilevering the bridge out as you go, so, but we have to look at that, we'll have to look at it.
Have you been on site, Mr. Bradley?
I personally, no. I'm, one of my engineers that have worked with me have been on site. I'll be sure to be out there with you, though.
Lot of poison ivy.
I hate poison ivy. That's why I like these, well, actually, I was going to say, I don't mind walking in the fall, but you still get poison ivy in the fall.
Even then, there's coyotes, too.
I don't mind coyotes. I'm too big for them to eat, well, maybe.
Anybody else in the planning?
I do have a question. There's a fair amount of ledge on that property, too. Have you established how much ledge you think is there, and how you would be dealing with this?
We will, we will. I mean, fortunately, unfortunately, ledge is very commonplace now, and we deal with it, you know, from a construction design perspective, we'll deal with it. Whenever we see, you know, lodge out props, we survey and we show them on the plan, we do a lot of test holes to identify the extent of them, we design our utilities around them best we can, that's something we'll do.
And would that involve a significant amount of blasting in order to...
Right.
Yeah, the reality is blasting is very commonplace these days in construction in Rhode Island, and it's really southern New England, it's just inevitable. It's just the way the glaciers ended, the air, just there's a lot of rock, whether it's ledge or big boulders.
But we have, we do have a lot of discussion in our comprehensive plan, especially in the natural and cultural resources element, about low-impact development, and we define that very broadly, not just water runoff, as DEM tends to define it, but as any aspect, including blasting, including the use of explosives to smash rock formations. And we encourage developers to work with the terrain as much as possible, and actually, that leads to a much more attractive development when you do that. When you start the blasting, then you get, well, you get something that I think doesn't do justice to the original terrain. So, just keep that in mind when you're, when you're looking at it. So, thank you so much for coming, and we will, Ashley will get you on the agenda when you're ready to visit us again, and I hope we've given you enough feedback so that you have a better idea of where we're, where we're coming from here in Tiverton. So, you...
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Enjoy the rest of the summer.
Thank you, likewise.
We have, we have two members who, we have one member who needs to leave right now because of a family emergency, and so now we only have a bare quorum of five members, and we have another member who also has an emergency at home. So, we may end up... Pardon? Oh, you're good? Okay, okay. So, I'd like to go on now to agenda item number three, and the first thing on agenda item number three is Wingover Solar Farm. I think we can dispense with this very quickly.
Please.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are still conducting a meeting, and I can't hear even myself speak.
Take five, so...
No.
Okay.
And so, please carry on your conversations outside.
Stu, mind if I...
Yes, Nathan, and also, I don't know if there's anything on the agenda.
I see A, B, so East Coast.
B, oh, yes, yes, you have to be here for B. Okay, so, but, but A is not going to take us very long. We don't have anybody here from Amoresco, and I'm going to ask Ashley to bring us up to date on that. It looks like we do have a solution in the making.
So, I spoke with Mike Williamson of Amoresco, he was in receipt of the letter that was sent. He contacted me. He has provided you with a invoice, I believe, for the fence that he has contracted to have installed. He said he is, wants to satisfy the requirement in terms of access. He was just asking for specific information on how he achieves that access. So, I know that the cemetery is located outside of the fenced area. I'm not sure what the discussion was at the planning board when it was approved in terms of how that access would be legitimized.
So, Susan is also a member of the Historic Cemeteries Commission.
And the way that we accessed the cemetery before solar went in was we went to the right, to the cemetery, because the cemetery's on the right, and to the, to the north, and we went along the cornfield. Well, now that whole cornfield is fenced, so we can't do that, so there's a ditch there, so we can't even go to the right. So, you went with Jim to the left?
You can go around.
I have the plans, Stu, if you want those up.
So, I brought all this up.
Yeah, why don't you do the, make it easier for me?
The easy way to access it when you're looking at the front entrance is to go around to the left. It's all pretty flat, if you do that.
Outside of the fence?
Well, obviously outside the fence. However, that would require that they keep that mowed, because we don't want a vehicle with a catalytic converter setting the grass on fire. And it would require, maybe, that they might have to move a piece of the fence in a little bit to get around. As far as the cemetery itself goes, it was always meant to be fenced, it never was, and I was there about five weeks ago, and they had started mowing inside. However, I don't notice that they've ever mowed inside up against the fence.
Okay.
You mean outside the fence?
Outside the fence and inside the fence, you know, that's...
But they didn't mow outside the fence, so would you just...
No, they never have, and I don't know, I guess it depends on your definition of access. To me, access would include removing impediments to going around. That would include brush grass, stuff like that, but that's up to you guys.
I guess right now, the only way we can maintain it is hump the wall from the other cemetery, I'm not supposed to...
Yeah, but that's not a viable solution, because if it changes ownership...
No.
So, what are you looking for? A path from the entrance?
I'm sorry?
Amoresco to the, you're looking for a path?
Okay, so you see where the X is for the cemetery?
Cemetery.
Go around to the right and down, you'll find the front entrance.
Yeah.
Okay, right about, okay, you see that little, move your, move down and to the left?
Yeah.
That section of fence, is that what that is?
I think so. Try to make it...
Or you gotta go down.
I don't know.
So...
I'll have to go back and read them.
This is the entrance.
Right.
It's the road in.
That's the road, right?
Yep.
All right, so going around this way, there's a big drainage swale in here?
Mm-hmm.
In a ditch?
It's represented by that.
Yeah, you can't get around that way. Keep in mind that everybody on the cemetery commission's my age, and they can't be hiking around. So, if you go around this way, and around the back, it's like a soccer field in the back. It's pretty flat around here. The only impediment is right over here, it's kind of narrow, and they might need to move the fence over a few feet.
At this corner here?
No, go back this way. Where's the front entrance?
Over here. Can you bring up the aerial? The aerial? Sure. It's a little, I think it's a little easier to see where you are.
It's like right here, it's kind of narrow.
Right here?
Right here. They can go around like this.
Crandall will come up, this is the first one, I'll come up.
Yeah, just put in Crandall Road, it'll come up as the first property. It looks like the fence comes right here, almost into this tree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then swings this way, so getting in right here...
Yeah, so maybe they, maybe some of the tree can go away, or the brush that's over here.
But you guys are looking for a way to drive over there?
Yeah, because we have equipment.
Okay.
Yeah. Because going around the whole thing is like, over, well, I don't know, over a quarter of a mile.
Yeah, it's ridiculous. That's why we went to the right.
And there's no way to go to the right now?
No, because, because it's a ditch now.
It's their property. I'd like to let you do it, just go to the left.
It's a ditch.
Pretty good ditch.
Who's supposed to go to the right?
I fell.
That's the long way around.
It is the long way around.
But it's flat.
But it's the only way we can get to it without going...
Is there enough room, if you go to the left, to drive a vehicle? With the exception, the road is inside the fence, with the exception of... So, we can see that you can't get through, like, right here, because the fence is right there.
Right.
So, if they opened this up to let you in here, can you get all the way around on this side with a vehicle?
Well, easily, that's good and flat around. Around the back, it's all, like I said, it's almost like a football field.
Can you pull out a little bit more? Because they planted some stuff down, like, right here.
There's good...
There's enough space for you to get through there?
At least 30 feet.
All right, because my solution to this is basically to take a map and draw, basically draw the route that you want to get to, tell them that they have to create that access.
Hold on, because you have to give me that?
Yeah.
What do you want me to do?
Or I can, I can do it, and I can send it to you, and you can tell me, yes, that works for us, that's the way we've been doing it. It seems like the issue is right at the entrance road? Yep.
Is that like a horseshoe shaped driveway right there? Or just the shadow over it?
There's like a U.
Right, so...
That's inside the fence, though. If you, if you look closer, if you zoom, it's hard to see on here.
That's where the house used to be.
But the fence runs like this.
Oh, that's the fence, okay.
And goes over here. So, the problem is that they have to get in here, but if they open that up and get you in there, then you should be able to get all the way around with a vehicle.
Yeah, because see, see to the left, there's a ditch right there, see?
Right there.
Yeah, that's, that's a big ditch.
It's a pretty good ditch.
So, we can't even, we can't even go the way that way.
So, what would be easier, if they clear some trees, or just put some fill in there for you? Would that, would that fix it, just fill in that with some gravel, that low spot, so you could drive over it?
The ditch?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's a big ditch.
What, you mean depth wise or width wise, or both?
Both.
It looks like that whole area just kind of...
Yeah, yeah.
So, Ashley, when you do that, just do it through Jim Spears.
Right.
Okay.
I'm only the liaison.
Well, I may have to send it to you and have you...
Or you can send it to me.
Write it to him, because I don't have his... Or you give him, give me his contact information, but I'm thinking the easiest way to resolve this is to just take the aerial, draw in where you want the access, you guys tell me that works for you, and then I'll send it to him and say, you have to provide vehicular access along this general area.
Yeah. But you said they are going to put the fence in?
They have an invoice for the fence, they said they've ordered it to be installed.
Are they going to have somebody from the cemetery look if they do that?
I can ask, but...
Is that what you want?
Well, we, we gave, we have staked, we did have stakes out the 25 feet, so that, because they're not supposed to be within that.
Okay.
I don't know what, if they moved those stakes or not.
The reason I ask that is, when you think of cemetery, you think of a cemetery with visible stones. When you're looking at a historical cemetery, visible stones don't necessarily exist, they'd be like rocks.
Right.
They know what these are and they can make sure they don't get disturbed.
Yeah, these are all field stones. We did put the, the historical cemetery sign outside the cemetery, so it's facing the fence. So from that view.
Okay, so they're supposed to put the fence 25 feet outside of...
Yeah, we did mark the boundaries. I don't, like I said, we put stakes there. I don't know whether they're still there or not.
All right, let me contact him and ask him if he would be willing to coordinate that installation to have one of you available to make sure that the fence installation does not disturb any part of the cemetery. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe that resolves that agenda item. And hearing no disagreement to that, I would like to go on to 3B, Agenda Item Number 3B, which is a request for return of escrow funds by East Coast Construction. And we deferred this matter at our last meeting because, because I don't, I think Rick had not heard back from East Coast Construction. Have you heard anything?
Thank you, Stu. Based on a visual today and the fact that I have not heard from East Coast, it is my understanding that the modifications have not yet been made. So I would recommend that it be deferred till the next meeting again.
Why don't we table it?
Or table it, whatever.
Until you put it back on.
Well, Rick was making the point at our last meeting that we should probably just keep it on the agenda until... So do we actually need a motion to...
Motion to continue the item B till the next agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all of those in favor? Okay, so we're going to, this item will just get deferred to September 14th, 12th?
12.
And I don't know the legal terminology, deferred, table, continued. But to have it on for the next meeting makes sense to me. I did see some markings on the pavement in the area that was discussed, so I...
So they might be working on it.
That they'll be working on it, so.
Good.
So other than that, I believe I'm dismissed.
You're dismissed.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks.
So that brings us to 3C, Approval of Minutes. I didn't find any problem with Ed's minutes, but Rosemary has some modifications. Would you like to actually read your modifications so that, so that Ed can actually put those in?
I, I just want to, on page two. And I'm putting these in here for when I get to that one. This is for the 7/11? Yeah. Okay, on page two, the second paragraph. Ms. Sweet requests written confirmation from Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management that will not be involved with the project. They will not be involved with the project. As mentioned at the TRC meeting, I just would like to add that. And then also on that item, I thought we made two motions in that night about extending the time clock. And I found that Ashley's memo had one date for the time clock and the agenda has another date. And it's not even mentioned in the minutes. So I'm a little, I don't know what it is. Because it's on October 16th, I believe, in Ashley's memo.
Hold on, I'm sorry, which application are you pitching?
This is the same one. This is on the item number, this is on the SOLA project. This is on page two.
Okay.
And it's in that paragraph after I just made the modification to...
It was one motion.
I thought there were two.
Stu asked me if you could do it as one motion, hold on specifically.
Okay, but the date isn't, isn't mentioned in the...
We didn't have a date at that time because we didn't have a certificate of completeness.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we should add that so that, you know, verbiage to that effect.
Would you, would you like to offer some...
No, I think...
If there's no time clock, why do we, I'm confused why we have that. If there's no...
Because it's on the agenda and it's supposed to be mentioned. You put, it's a requirement of an application is to have a time clock.
Right, but there's...
But the application hadn't been submitted at that point or determined, determined complete more specifically.
Okay.
So there's no time.
I stand corrected. All right, page three. This I'm asking that we put in here just as a placeholder in case we want to go back and look at a particular meeting. Whereas, and this is under the project status sheet in Office Updates, Item G. And I asked if the permanent bounds had been installed. Not checked, but installed. And they were permanent bound markers. And, and she, and then, and she asked for the status of projects, IEE, Advantage Storage, Brayton-SOLA, Amoresco, when, when whatever it is, Cemetery Access. And then a discussion ensued.
Yeah, wing over farm.
Yeah, wing over farm, okay. Just as a placeholder so that we can go back to the video.
Did you get enough of that, Ed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Okay. Does anybody else have any modifications or corrections to the minutes? I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Tricia Hilton seconds. Do we have a discussion? Hearing no discussion, all of those in favor of approving the minutes with the modifications recommended by Rosemary?
And I was not here, so...
And you can't though because you weren't here, that's right. Chris was not here. So now we've only got four.
Of our nine, so... Well, not nine. Oh, there were nine at that time.
Majority present at that time.
A majority of those present?
Present.
Good.
Yeah, so we're good. Okay, so we've approved the minutes, but Ed's going to make those few modifications. Okay? And that brings us to Agenda Item Number 3D. And this says reschedule November 5 meeting.
That's a Sunday, November 5th.
Discussion and possible vote to reschedule November 5 meeting. November 5 is Election Day.
But that's a Sunday. You're thinking of the 7th.
Oh, the 7th, I put...
Yeah. Yeah, you're looking at November 7th is the election day.
It was 7th, yeah.
Damn it, Ed.
I know.
Can we still do this despite the...
Just do it next month.
Oh, do it next month, okay.
But it's clear you're going...
Now, what is this about? Didn't we have to vote to move the September meeting?
No, the September meeting was, I put that on as the 12th originally because of the day after Labor Day.
Yes.
The first one, Sue Gill, when she did the schedule.
Yeah, she always...
Moved that.
Pushed it out a week, okay. Okay, fine. Okay. So you, we'll put this on the agenda.
Yeah, I knew it was the 7th.
Right. So Planning Board, 3E, Update of Subdivision Regulations. We, we talked last week about having a committee of the planning board. And I think there were two, there were three volunteers, myself, Tricia, and Rosemary all volunteered. And we were going to ask if there was a fourth. Tonight, we were going to ask if there was a fourth. Is there a fourth? I think we should probably defer this until our next meeting because we may well have two new members at our next meeting. We'll certainly have one. And also, two of our members are up for reappointment. So, so I think we should probably defer this. Also, we haven't, the planning board hasn't received anything from Weston and Sampson with respect to our subdivision regulations. So there's nothing to discuss at this point. So let's defer that one.
You want a motion?
So we'll put it, put, and put it on the agenda for September. And so that brings us to 3F. TRC Policies and Procedures. Again, because we have two new members coming, likely to be appointed by Town Council, we certainly have candidates for those, for those vacancies. And we have two existing members up for reappointment. Maybe we should delay this one. I read through the policies and procedures. I personally, Ashley, I thought it was fine. The only two items that I'd like to ask you to reconsider and ask the whole planning board to consider is, first of all, and this wasn't my idea, it was called to my attention, should the notes or the summary of TRC meetings, I'm not calling them minutes, I'm just calling them notes, should those also be sent to the Secretary of State? Even though it's not required, wouldn't it be a good idea to do that just in, just for, just for public information? Just for, you know, the sake of open government? I think it should be. I think, you know, the more people getting information, having more people get information is better than having fewer people get information. That's one recommendation I was prepared to make. The other recommendation had to do with, there's some language in here that has to do with when a TRC is having, is having a hearing. It's under, it's under 2B4, under Organization. The concurring vote of a majority of members of the Technical Review Committee sitting at a hearing is required to decide any matter within the discretion of the committee. I just, I would suggest we just remove that because our TRCs do not have hearings and should not have hearings. They are, they are...
Where are you, Stu? I'm sorry.
Under, under Technical Review Committee membership, which is Roman numeral 2, go to B, Organization, and B4.
I don't have a 4.
Page 2.
Page 2, B4.
I don't have a 4.
I do. I do too.
Yeah, maybe not. Hold on.
The printed ones. Ashley, there's a 4.
How is that possible? I don't have a 4 in my digital copy.
So let's, let's, let's just...
Doesn't matter if you want to change, remove or change the meeting or...
Consider it removed. It's not in my copy.
Um, hi.
Sorry, what happened?
What happened?
You know what happened, Ashley? I think we got an earlier version and then you made your own edits. So if you would, if you would go back and check with Ed and see what he passed out and compare that with what you have on your computer. But I suggest we defer this to our next meeting and let the two new members also participate in this discussion. But I like what you did, Ashley, and I'm, and I'm in favor of going forward with it, but... And in the meantime, I think our members should consider those two things. Do we want our, do we want TRC notes or minutes or whatever you want to call them? Do we want those not only shared with, with the full planning board, which they absolutely must be because the whole idea of a TRC is to, is to give the planning board good technical information from our own town experts, but also should we send that to the Secretary of State? I would, I'm inclined to say, yeah, let's send it to the Secretary of State. It wouldn't take, it wouldn't take Ed more than two seconds to do that. He knows how to do that.
Could I make a suggestion?
The, well, and the other thing to think about is, do, you know, if, if Ashley finds that this reference to TRC hearings is still in her draft, do we want to take it out? I suggest we do.
So I'll only ask if anyone else has any comments? Because if you do, I can incorporate those and send out a new version.
I think Rosemary does.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Number two, all other members shall serve in an equal capacity. Against, in that same paragraph, number two.
B2.
Yeah, B2.
Because it states that the administrative officer serves as the chair.
Yeah.
And then there are no other offered officers. Everyone else is...
Okay.
And just a member, an equal member. Because typically when you have, like the planning board has, you know, a chair, a vice chair.
I thought it was a given.
No, I don't, I don't think, well, I mean...
I don't know.
I think it just serves to clarify that the administrative officer chairs the committee and everyone else just sits as an equal member.
I actually think Robert's rules would have, you have sub-officers unless specifically stated otherwise.
All right, whatever you say. A majority, I'd like to see a, a number stated per quorum if you have a membership.
I incorporated. I accepted your changes. All right, I need to look at that.
Number three, I'd like to see a number for the quorum if you decide on, at some point. And as far as Stu's suggestion about posting.
Wait, can you go, can you go back to that?
I have a number, number three, a majority of appointed members must be present to constitute a quorum.
Yeah.
And you want a number there?
Yeah.
You can't.
Why?
Because it's based on the number of people present.
But if you state, there are so many constitute the, the membership. You can state, like we had nine members, five is a quorum, used to be. But, you know, quorum for the meeting. If you're going to have three people there.
But, but there's another section. Just above that, Rosemary says up to three members of the planning board may be appointed.
Right, but I mean to have a meeting, a quorum.
But...
At least.
But these are just the policies, right? And right above that, Membership says, under G, up to three members of the planning board may be appointed.
Correct.
So not knowing how many of those three are actually appointed, you cannot right now in the Policies and Procedures state what that fixed number is for a quorum.
And, and there's another issue too, because in Ashley's draft, there's language that the AO may excuse a member of the TRC if, if, if the project is totally unrelated to that. You know, so, so the, the membership is not a hard, fast number. It will fluctuate. So the only thing we can say is a majority. It is the language you did use. But I would like everybody to go through and take another hard look at, at the membership that Ashley is suggesting. I love the idea of having somebody from the Conservation Commission. And I completely agree with all of the other members. So, but, but take a look at that because you may think of somebody else that you think might belong.
I don't have my...
I'm sorry, Rosemary, but I thought you were done.
No, I just, about posting, Stu's thing about posting. How about posting on the, the planning board's website as opposed to going to the state?
Well, no.
Along with decisions.
We, we, we should definitely post to the, to the planning board website, post our minutes or our notes, whatever you want to call them, as well as go to the state. So Tricia?
So forgive me because I don't have my draft in front of me. But my understanding, as I recall reading it, is that the members of the planning board who are appointed are permanent. who are appointed are permanent members?
Yes.
Yes. So I had a little bit of a concern with that just because, first of all, I, I think it's good for everybody to have an opportunity to participate. I also think that different planning board members have different strong suits depending on what the application is. So I understand not going through the process of.
Can I, I'm going to cut you off right now.
What?
Because we have a section, the administrative officer shall have the ability to add additional members to the TRC on an as-needed basis depending on specific project-related issues or topics.
Right, but then you'd have to take away, you'd have to, you'd have to substitute somebody, right?
No, the additional members shall be included in the count to determine whether a quorum is present.
But I think the concern is, is that if you have three members who are appointed and, for instance, we have something specific that people are interested in, then you have too many planning board members.
So here was, this would be my suggestion, in an effort, for those people who can make the TRCs, because not all, all members, because they're held during the day, not all members can make them. If you were to identify, maybe depending, you know, and broad-based categories of interest, right? So, you know, somebody might have an interest in particularly environmental issues or conservation issues, or somebody might have an interest in, if it's a, if it's a design review thing, and, you know, sort of go through the, go through a kind of rotate, if not rotating basis, that way. I'm just thinking that there are probably going to be applications that, you know, come around that some people are really going to want to participate in and maybe others that are not, you know, not necessarily their strong suit. As opposed to having three permanent members, and especially given the new regulations that are coming, right? And how important the TRC is going to be after January 1st, it might start to get to be a heavy load for the three people who get appointed.
My only concern, I, I hear what you're saying, the, the, you know, concept behind doing this was to try to not have to talk about it at every meeting and hold back an apple. This would be a set meeting that happens every month. People know, it's on their calendars, they come to it. We know as applications come in, I can load an agenda for the TRC with applications. I mean, we could have, I mean, there could just kind of be an agreement that if there are three people that are sitting members, you know, that there's, there's some willingness there to swap people out for specific issues that come up and maybe y'all tell me what your specific issues of concern are and I can try to coordinate that and make sure that the people that need to be in the room are in the room.
Yeah.
So the building code board of appeal, you know, we just, when there's something that comes up that we're needed for, we just kind of like decide on a date and a time that works for everybody. Because with the police and the fire, and we just pick a day, I guess nine times out of 10, it's not going to work for them.
I've never seen the police at the TRC meeting.
Well, it's in the membership.
It is in the membership.
Right, so.
And they're appointed every time.
They're appointed and they, they.
And they don't show up. All right, so is, is it mandatory that they show up to these? I mean, it's, it's in a list here, so I don't know.
I have no authority to make them show up.
Okay. So then, all right, so we just eliminate the people who just aren't going to be here. So it would just be planning board members.
Well, I mean, we.
Three planning board members, who else?
These.
Needs to be there.
Fire, Dan Ruffey.
Dan always, Dan and Rick always show up.
So who do we need?
The zoning official and building official always shows up. I, I have a feeling that a member of the Conservation Commission would, would want to participate. I don't really see, I mean, I, I think that the idea behind this is to not have to have a discussion at every planning board meeting every time we want to send something to the TRC and that these professionals can put this meeting in their calendar. They know it's, you know, Ed sometimes struggles with trying to pull a meeting together by having to email everybody and say, well, like, are you available? Well, you're not available, so how about this date? And so this would avoid that issue.
Is it mandatory that needs to be a membership just out of? So we have a membership list. Who absolutely needs to be at these meetings?
My hope is that everybody will come. I, like I said, the only.
What stops us from having the meeting? Like, who not being there just, you know.
It does nothing. Because it's a majority of the members present constitutes a quorum. So if only four people show up, your quorum is three. If five people show up, your quorum is three.
Is it a person board? Is that what we're saying? This is going to be a 10-person committee?
No, 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 no.
The membership, I count 10 people in the membership.
It's the same thing as the, as the planning board. If, if a member doesn't show up, a member doesn't show up. You still hold your meeting, you still.
That doesn't mean you have a quorum.
Right, but that, so we have to have six of these 10 people show up, right?
But most of them do.
10-person.
It's, it's us, we're the problem. We, we, we are the problem. The other people are pretty good. So what about, what about this? What if we were all asked to say, if you're going to go to a TRC, you know, are there certain things that you have an interest in? When you schedule a TRC, an email goes out right to everybody that says, so we don't discuss it here, there's an email that gets sent out to everybody that says, there's a TRC that's going to be scheduled, you know, we're going to have a standing date, right? Is that the idea?
Yes.
Like the third Tuesday or the third whatever. There's a TRC, you know, broadly topics are going to be, you know, it's a design review or it's an environmental review or whatever it is. Of the people who said they're interested in doing these, and which might not be the whole planning board, because some people might not be able to go during the day. And then, you know, you're asked to respond within 72 hours period.
And what if, what if all nine members say yes?
If, well, I don't think.
There's 10, so you have to have a minimum of six people show up at this meeting, is that correct?
Yeah.
For one, okay.
Yeah, but I.
If it's a 10-person.
Wait a minute, though. You're all confusing me.
I'm confused too, because we're talking about two different things.
It looks like we're building a committee made up of 10 individuals.
Okay.
Right, so six people have to show up to this meeting.
You said, but what you wrote in there was.
A majority of appointed members must be present to constitute a quorum.
That's why I like the name.
Why is, why do we have a higher threshold for creating a quorum than we do for the planning board?
Quorum is different than being able to vote or approve.
We voted.
You still have to have a quorum to have a meeting. You have to have a majority of the members present to pass an application.
So we don't currently have a requirement for a quorum?
A majority of members present.
For the TRC.
Correct.
Okay, if you don't want that, then no. I don't know how you can have a meeting.
For the ad hoc right now, I don't know what is the, what is the quorum right now?
There isn't a quorum.
There isn't.
There is no quorum.
So we could actually have it with just one person?
I mean, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense, but with members.
Basically, you're here to just determine a date to have a meeting once a month for a TRC and whoever can be there, at least one of the people out of the 10 shows up and.
One of the people.
If you want to define quorum, it's different, you can do that here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My, I guess.
Tricia, she was different.
It is. My question is, is there, is there a require, do we have to set a quorum for a technical review committee? If only the fire marshal, the zoning official, and myself show up, we can't hold a meeting?
Right.
If you had one member of the planning board, you might be able to. That's why we call it ad hoc.
But I'm asking, even if it's not ad hoc, are we required to set a quorum?
I think Robert's rules provide that a majority of the members present is required for a quorum.
To Ashley's point, I actually do think so because I will say this, in the past, there have been instances where a small TRC of three people has met absent anybody from the planning board being there, right, at all. And, you know, and decisions get made that then, you know, the, the planning boards are, you know, are kind of like this. And in some cases, there's not even been an administrative officer who was part of the decision process.
Well, how does that even happen? Because they chair the committee.
That's right.
It's because.
And there, there's, they have no decision-making authority whatsoever.
It's advisory only.
It's, it's.
Advisory to the planning.
Can we agree to look into this?
Yeah, let's, let's do that. Look into this and, and postpone this to September.
Organizing the meeting, I've been trying to make sure that everybody can attend.
But, but, but think about it, think about it. And, and keep in mind that the TRC is, is, is important because they, these are the town experts who, who understand a lot of the engineering and technical issues. But they are advisory to the planning board. They are not a separate entity.
For now.
Well, but, but not, not completely though, because in some cases on the lower threshold, they're only advisory to the building official.
For DPR, yeah.
For DPR. So in some cases, those things don't come to the planning board at all. The TRC is advisory to the building official and then the building official.
It's not even a TRC.
That needs to be looked into when we do our subdivision regulations and clean that mess up.
But that's my point about, that's, that is to my point about not having any planning board members as part of the.
Yeah, no, no, that, that is.
Because that's what happens with.
We don't want to turn the TRC into the planning board or support the planning board. That's sometimes been my concern. But yes, let's think about this, but I think Ashley's done an excellent job.
I agree.
Of, of, of putting, of putting a draft together. And I, I think if we all take a good, hard look at it, we'll be ready to make a quick decision in September. So let's go on to, to G, G, which is planning board policies and procedures. And again, this is an Ashley initiative. I completely agree with her, her revised timeframes for submission of applications. We, we looked at this a month ago and I think we were all pretty happy. And we particularly liked the idea of Ashley actually setting dates.
Yeah, helpful.
Making it more specific. So has everybody had a chance to take a look? And does anybody have any revisions? Ashley, did you have any thoughts? You're, you're still happy with what you've got and you want to go with it? Super. Then I'll make a motion to, to approve this. Now, would this be an amendment to our subdivision regulations? Or at the present time, would it simply be office policy?
This is a, this is a document that you adopt and have purview over, but it's a, it's a policy document. It's not a regulatory document.
But, but, I'm sorry, Stu, we need them to amend the policies and procedures of the board concurrent.
Yes, that's what we're amending.
It was our, our, we, we, we have a document called policies and procedures. Now, we, we might, but, but at, at the present time, the, the time tables are also in our subdivision regulations, I believe. No.
No.
No, they're not, okay. They're only in, okay, so that's no problem. And we can totally control our own policies and procedures, so.
You are voting to amend the planning board policies and procedures in terms of the submission deadlines for applications.
We're going to make them the same for both advertise and not advertise.
Yes, yes.
So I, so I would make a motion to support Ashley's draft for the new deadlines.
But they, it doesn't have the correct.
We, we, we have a motion, we have a second from Tricia Hilton. Now we'll have a discussion. So.
We don't have, it's incorrect, the November 7th meeting date on this document.
That was just an example.
Example of how.
Of how it would be structured. We, we were showing you.
Oh, this isn't the document.
Not the actual dates, it's just a sample.
That's what we'll produce based on the fact that you're amending the policies and procedures to reflect. What did we agree on? Six weeks? Seven weeks?
Seven.
Seven weeks.
So this.
Prior to the date of, because right now it says 21 days.
Yeah. So, so, so in the, in, going forward, if we, if we approve Ashley, if we approve the motion that's on the table right now, people, applicants will actually see a date rather than 21 days.
Yes.
Yeah, this has a date, okay.
So that, that's, that's all she was doing.
Right, I was giving you an example of if we change it in the policies and procedures from 21 days to, I guess we'll count the days, but it would, we agreed on seven weeks, that we will produce that piece of paper that will lay out all of the deadlines for submission for the whole year.
Fine.
And it'll get posted.
Okay.
Based on the amended seven-week timeframe as opposed to the 21-day timeframe.
Okay, good, good, good work, Ashley. Hearing no further.
Stu did in a second.
Hearing no further discussion, all of those in favor? unanimous. Okay, that brings us to three H, planning office projects, status sheet, and office updates.
So I don't ha, I don't have a copy of what, Ed, did you hand out of?
Yeah, I did.
I don't have a copy.
There's just a few projects on there. It was the, the ones that we heard tonight, Mrs. Road application. Also have the administrative subdivision from that you just denied, Alashan's Realty. What we currently have going right now, active in the office.
This is Alashan's Realty that you denied, Ashley, is that Volgomash Road? That's not the one he's got on, on Stafford Road?
Different administrative subdivision by the same entity on a different lot.
But that never came back, the one on?
No, I certified that incomplete, right?
That one went in incomplete and.
And we never heard from them.
As far as I know, Bill is still working on it.
I chaired that meeting and, but he's got one house, which he's entitled to, on the property.
We might be talking about something different.
This is the duplex he's got on a.
Oh, that's the.
On the wet.
Are you talking about the Stafford Road? Yeah, that's a diff.
That was a subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's wet and has, has an access to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, but the other one that we labeled basically from Alashan's, that one is coming back eventually. But Bill said he's got a lot going on.
Okay.
Bill who? Bill Smith?
Yes.
Is working through, Dibalo?
He's doing, he's doing a hundred projects, yeah.
Any, does anybody have any other questions for Ashley or Ed about what's coming up? Good, and nothing, nothing much coming up.
Not, nothing besides what we've told you.
Don't we have plenty?
Apart from, apart from what we're dealing with tonight.
To find more.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's, thank you very much. So that brings us to I, which is general assembly legislative updates. Do you have anything more to add? Or you did a very good job at our last meeting, giving us all some very sobering information about what the general assembly has given the governor, which the governor has now signed into law.
Mm-hmm.
Effective January 1st.
Most of it is January 1.
And, good. Anything to, anything to add to that? And of course, anybody can talk to Ashley privately if they have any questions about any of this stuff.
Can you email me that summary? Because you said you were going to after last meeting.
I believe, I sent it to somebody.
So that brings us to J, status of zoning code rewrite. Now, we have a zoning rewrite committee and we elected Tricia Hilton to be the liaison with the planning board. So has a meeting been set for that?
No, not yet. We have not, we have not done anything yet.
Stu, can I give you some input on that? Yes. Do you, do you serve on that as well?
I want to.
So as of yesterday, Conservation, Zoning, and, who the hell's the other one? Oh, EDC.
Yes, EDC.
Have not provided a name.
Have not provided a name, and I could find no evidence that they have even discussed it, so I kind of wondered, were they ever properly notified? So I sent them all an email to the fact that, hey, guys, wake up, and I got a response from Renee Jones, EDC, who said, well, she'll appoint herself. I've got somebody from zoning who's interested, and I have not heard from Conservation. However, we'll give them some time, but at some point, we're gonna have to get this show on the road.
Okay.
So that's where we're at, and we can't be dragging this out.
Yeah, thanks, Jay, for doing that.
And I, I should have done it a while ago, I'm usually better than this, but I just suddenly woke up myself and said, whoa.
Okay, um, anything else on that? Hearing none. Status report on the North Teverden Industrial slash Business Park Committee. We did have a meeting, we had an organizational meeting, I serve on that, you, you guys appointed me as liaison for the planning board. It, it's a big group of people. Renee Jones is on it, another member of the Economic Development Commission is also on it, um, Tom Ramitowsky, Conservation Commission appears to be on it. I think we just, uh, just had news that the Open Space Commission has appointed a member, and I can't remember who that is. It's not Brian James.
There's a, a meeting next week, right?
And there's a meeting, uh, our second meeting is next week, and so in preparation for that, I did send, um, our chair is, um, a, a Town Council member, Mike Burke, so I sent Mike, uh, an analysis of what is in the Comprehensive Community Plan that specifically applies to North Teverden and the business slash industrial park. So he, so that's a handout, um, and, um, so we've got a meeting coming up next week, it's, I think at the library at 7:00 on, I don't know, Tues, Wednesday night, something like that. Anyhow.
It's on Wednesday night.
And any member, and any member of the public can sit in if they're interested. We, we have several members who were very active in the crematorium, who put themselves forward as public members and then were appointed by Town Council, so, uh, so that's where that stands. Okay? Any questions? Hearing none.
Next meeting.
So then-
Is that board full?
It is, it is, yeah. It's, it's too big, it's like 10 people. Okay, and, and so the next scheduled meeting is September 12. So do we, do we have a motion to adjourn?
We have a privileged motion at 9:26.
Wow. We did good tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming.